Give you a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and is broadcast over to Lunenburg public access. I'd like to introduce you to the board members. To my left is Lisa Normadine, she's our Board Secretary, Al Gravel, Jim Bezakowski, Anne Swinthrop, Paul Doherty, and David Blatt. And Pat Callahan sitting out there, he's a associate member. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communication. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have of the applicant while they are at the mic. There will be a public comment period. Again, if you want to make a comment, please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and you'll address all comments and questions to the board. I'm actually going to, the board will allow two public comments because this is a case where we actually are going to read two different applications and I believe we're going to separate them and we will do the lot one and then the lot two if the board is in agreement.
As two separate hearings?
Correct. Not two separate, it's still under the umbrella of one but it is going to be read as two separate.
Sure.
And it will allow public comment at the end of each. So with that, the board also is going to go into deliberation and with the required findings for any special permit, this is actually, there are going to be three different things I'm going to read. The findings for a special permit, that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health, unduly hazardous because of traffic, flow congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reason. That it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or the amenities of the neighborhood. That it will be operated with reasonable regard for audit and sightliness if in open use. That it will not produce noise, vibration, smock, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. I'm also going to read the findings for a dimensional requirement. That the permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is an appropriate location for such a building or alteration. The proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood or with regard to size, location, and architecture. The granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of the special permit will not unreasonably diminish the available light, air, sunlight, and other amenities. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. I'm also going to read the findings for a variance, which is A, circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to undersign for the following reasons. Desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good for the following reasons. The variance desired may be granted without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent or purpose of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
Do you want me to read them both? I'll just read everything?
No, read everything.
Okay. Everything, everything? Even the project overview?
No, the project overview, I think that will allow the engineer to come up and address that. That should be part of what he does.
Okay, this is an application for, petition for variance from the terms of the zoning bylaw, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Daniel Proctor, P.O., Box 196 in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes petitions as follows. Petition for variance of Section 6.43B-2, limiting driveways to two per lot. Applicant is requesting three. Petition for variance of Section 643E-1D, requiring a maximum width of 30 feet. Applicant requesting 40-foot wide driveway. Petition for variance of Section 6514, requiring a sign setback. Petition for variance of Section 643C-2, requiring a driveway to be 15 feet from the lot line. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this appeal or petition for variance concerns the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, 643B-2 and 643E-1D, 6514, 643C-2. The street address of the property is 380 and 390 Electric Ave., MAP 98, Parcel 166, MAP 98, Parcel 167, and MAP 98, Parcel 168. The name and address of each legal holder, legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Daniel C. and Jean M. Proctor, 1529 Mass Ave. in Lunenburg. Recorded in Wester Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 5898, Page 267, Recorded 8/26/2003, and Book 6709, Page 117, Recorded 4/28/08. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, petition, application concerning the land or building involved in this case, describe the case and the dates involved. A special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals was granted to Daniel Proctor, June 26, 2017, for 380 Electric Ave., allowing the construction of the car wash. And that's signed July 26 by Daniel Proctor. The next petition is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. An appeal or petition for variance from the terms of zoning bylaw, Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10, Zoning Board of Appeals. Name and address of the applicant is Daniel Proctor, P.O., Box 196, Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application and petitions as follows. A special permit in the commercial district by the Zoning Board of Appeals for gasoline station as allowed in Section 4631D and drive-through window service as allowed in Section 4631A. Also a petition for variance of Section 6514, requiring a sign setback. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, 4631A and D. The basis for the appeal for variance is found in Section 6514. The street address is 400 Electric Ave., assesses MAP 98, Parcels 166, 167, and 168. The legal holder of the land is Daniel C. and Jean M. Proctor of 1529 Mass Ave. in Lunenburg. The deeds recorded in Wester Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 5898, Page 267, Recorded 8/2603, and Book 6709, Page 117, Recorded 4/28/08. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, it's also a special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals was granted to Daniel Proctor, June 26, 2017, for 380 Electric Ave., allowing the construction of a car wash. That's signed July 26 by Daniel Proctor. The project overview, we're going to let the engineer go through that, so I will not read those three long pages. And also with the application is the quick claim deed that's filed at the Registry of Deeds of the three parcels that are the subject of the case tonight. Also, we have a list of abutters for both parcels and a map and a field card associated with each. It is a letter dated July 27 to the members of the Board of Appeals. I, Daniel Hearing, Daniel Proctor, authorized Ducharme and Dillis Civil Design Group, Incorporated, to be my representative at the hearing for the above referenced site. We trust this meets your needs at this time. If you have any questions or require additional information, please contact Ducharme and Dillis. And that's signed Daniel Proctor. Also, there are copies of the filings from the special permit that was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals for a sign setback and for the car wash. And the special permit questions, how do you come by those? Also, there's typical gasoline station photos attached and the existing site, site plan. One thing I didn't see. Excuse me for one moment. I'll also read the additional comments that were sent by some of the town boards, all were received today. Hi Lisa, no issues as presented from the fire department. Signed Patrick Sullivan. I have a memo from the Lunenburg Sewer Commission regarding proposed development of 380 Electric Ave. I thought I would put forward a concise note on the concerns of the Sewer Commission regarding the proposed plan and development of the parcel known as 380, 390, and 400 Electric Ave. by Dan Proctor. Although three parcels are listed in the notice of public hearing, the property was consolidated into one lot with a lot consolidation plan recorded at the registry, 8/15/17. This was done in order for the owners to comply with the sewer bylaw, sewer use regulations and connection, and connect to a pre-existing sewer serving 390 Electric Ave. for the Whalen Wash operation at 380 Electric Ave. Parcel ID is currently 98166 for the 4.22 acre property. We received a plan from Dan Proctor on 8/14/18, labeled ZBA Site Plan, dated 7/11/18. The sewer lines were not clearly indicated on the plan received for the new proposed building on Lot 2, previously known as 400 Electric Ave., nor the relocated building Lot 1. The commission's main concern was that per the sewer bylaw, no building can connect to sewer through an easement and must remain within the parcel that it serves. After further discussion with Dan and with Jack Rodigwens, who had reviewed the plan with Dan, it was made more clear that the intent is for the connections to sewer for all operations to remain on a lot served by sewer. Dan is aware that we need to receive a new plan clearly showing that the connections to sewer will comply with the sewer regulations. In addition, the ZBA and applicant should be aware that any change of use must first be put before the Sewer Commission for approval. The proposed development of the property previously referred to as 400 Electric Ave. will cause significant changes to the flow that is transported to the Lemonster wastewater plant, and as such, a clearance plan will also need to be approved by the City of Lemonster per the intermunicipal agreement between the city and the town of Lunenburg. Members of commission may attend the hearing should any other concerns or questions arise. Thank you for your consideration of the Sewer Commission issues. That's signed by their administrative assistant, Barb. I received this from the Conservation Commission. Good morning. On behalf of Conservation Commission, I must submit the following comments. A portion of the proposed development is with a 200-foot riverfront. As a minimum, the applicant should file a request for determination. Two, as this is an existing lot, alternatives that may or may not be possible should be listed in a narrative confined to the existing lot as required under Mass General Law, Chapter 131, Section 40, Wetland Protection Act. Three, the total square footage of the riverfront should be total for this proposal, and the prior car wash proposal is required under law, local bylaw to afford the commission to consider total cumulative impacts. Bylaw Section 7 permits and conditions states, "The commission shall take into account the cumulative adverse effects of loss, degradation, isolation, and replication of protected resource areas throughout the community and the watershed resulting from past activities permitted and exempt and foreseeable future activities." Please let me know if there are any questions. And that's signed Matthew S. Morrow, Conservation Administrator. This is from Jack Rodigwens, the DPW Director. Lisa, I have reviewed the proposed project with Dan Proctor and have no questions. Thanks. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't sure with the first reading if I heard the request for the outdoor storage permit. I don't know if I heard you say that or not, Lisa.
And you know what? Read Gary's letter. The letter from the building official.
Oh.
There's one more thing. Does somebody have it right there? No, that's the hearing notice.
The last page of the, right?
I don't know.
You're going to have it? Yeah, I'm saying it.
Oh, wait a minute. I do have it. I lied. So this is from the building official, Gary Rhodes, Building Commissioner. Currently, the above referenced property is in single ownership. The proposal is to divide the property into two lots and further develop the site. The number of reliefs, as outlined below, will be required from the Board of Appeals. To provide for the property to be divided, the proponent has filed two applications. There are also a number of previous decisions from the Zoning Board of Appeals. If the board decides to grant this latest request, I would recommend the board's decision recognize the earlier approvals and that they are included and modified as submitted in these requests. Lots 1 and 2. The plan divides the property into Lot 1 and Lot 2. The proposal is to provide a common driveway between the two lots. Currently, the zoning bylaw, 250, Section 6.43C-1, provides for a common driveway only with one and two family development. A variance will be necessary to provide for a common driveway between commercial properties in both decisions. Lot 1. The first application provides for the consolidation of all current uses of the property onto Lot 1. The Board of Appeals is being requested to grant special permits for the following. 250-6.43E-1D, to allow a 40-foot wide driveway where driveways are limited to a width of 30 feet. 2, Section 250-643C-2, to allow for the driveway to be located approximately five feet from the property line where 15 feet is required. 3, Section 250-45A-5, to allow outdoor storage. 4, 250-6514, to allow a second freestanding sign to be located approximately one foot from the right-of-way where the bylaw only allows one freestanding sign 20 feet from the right-of-way. The Board of Appeals is being requested to grant a variance to allow three driveway entrances where only two are allowed by Sections 250-643B-2. Lot 2, the second application, has been filed for Lot 2. The proposal is to construct a new gas station and donut shop with a drive-through. The Board of Appeals is being requested to grant special permits for the following. 1, 250-4119, to allow for a gasoline station in the commercial district. 2, 250-6514, to allow a freestanding sign to be located approximately one foot from the right-of-way where 20 feet is required. And that is a memo from Gary Rhodes, Building Commissioner, dated August 7. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay. And with that, I will invite the applicant up to address. Station.
Well, thank you. My name is Greg Roy with Ducharme and Dillis, and I kind of feel like when you read all that, you steal my thunder, so I appreciate that. But I'll give you a brief project overview. I did supply you with a project narrative summarizing the overall what we're planning to do. I also gave you narratives in the back of that which address the findings, mandatory findings that you need to make for both the special permit and the variance applications. But I'm just going to go over this plan, more of an overview, and hit on the key points, and then we're certainly interested to address any comments or questions that the board may have. So I'll take the mic and head over to the plan. You're with me. So I'll just talk about this more from an overall standpoint, and I, when I sat down and met with Mr. Rhodes prior to filing, he asked that I split these into two lots, into separate filings, just because we are proposing the two lots. So I do apologize if it's a bit cumbersome, but procedurally, Gary thought that that would be the best way to proceed with this. So I'm going to talk about this more as an overall project, however. So the real reason we're here is because Mr. Proctor has been approached by a local business owner who also does business at the honey farms, just developed the honey farms on Lemister Shirley Road to put a similar facility on the property. So we are, as was read a few times, we're proposing a gasoline station with a convenience store and a drive-through donut and coffee shop. So that really drove the preparation of this plan. Just for orientation, the existing car wash facility that we permitted about a year ago is right here, shown in this area. The queuing area is right here. North, just for your orientation, the new Unitel building is right about here, across the street. And the existing retail store is located on this portion of the lot, right in here. And the existing red shop building is located right about there. So that kind of puts you, orientates you on the site. So we've identified the area where we're proposing to put the new gas station, convenience store, drive-through area. This is very, very similar to what has been built down on Lemister Shirley Road. It has parking in the front, parking on the side. It has an entrance almost in the exact same location as the existing facility and an access point along Electric Ave. We are proposing, as was mentioned, a shared driveway so that we can consolidate, actually, I know we're asking you for a variance, but I'll explain that in a minute for the driveway curb cuts, but we're trying to consolidate entrances so that we can, we think it's a better, a better way to manage the traffic circulation. So we are proposing a shared driveway which would share with the proposed shop facility, which I'll get to in a minute. So from a circulation standpoint, we'd have a drive-through on the southerly side of the building. The queuing lane for that would be around the back. The gas pumps would be, and canopy would be in the front of the building with parking, additional parking on the side. The existing shop that Mr. Proctor runs would be relocated to the rear of the lot, and an additional building would be, is proposed, an additional shop building to house, I don't know, to house trucks, I suppose, and materials and maintenance things for the business. The existing bin material storage area would be relocated to the back of the property right here. And then the balance of the area would be used for maneuvering, you know, truck, you know, truck storage. We're proposing to have truck parking over in this area. We're proposing some employee parking for the office, over on the office side. And as I mentioned, we are proposing to share the driveway access for the gas station and the proposed shop location, which is why we've asked you for a relief on the width requirement. We feel that 30 feet would be a little narrow from a safety standpoint. We're going to have trucks going in and out of there, as well as patrons to the gas station and convenience store facility. So we're proposing a 40-foot wide traveled way along that route. We are indeed asking for three curb cuts on Lot 1. Really, the, each lot is allowed to have two curb cuts. Your bylaw allows two curb cuts. So we, as was mentioned, we're proposing to divide this into two lots, and from a planning layout standpoint, it just makes sense to put the entrance right here and to put the property line right here. There's still going to be effectively four curb cuts for these two lots on the property, and it's going to represent a consolidation of the existing curb cuts that are there today. So there's quite a, you know, there's really not a lot of consolidation. It's a one big access point along that right-of-way today. So we would be consolidating those curb cuts to a large degree with this proposed plan. The relief we're asking for for the offset to parking is really, is between this proposed lot line that we're asking for. So we are on the exterior. We're not asking for any relief from a parking offset standpoint. It's, the relief we're asking for is to accommodate the increased width. So we're asking for that five feet, you know, we're asking for, to go from 15 to five feet just along this property line here, but not on any of the ones on the outside. The signage that we're asking you for, the existing car wash sign, we, I think, that a year ago, Dan, that you were here, we asked you for the variance, a variance to put the sign just outside of the right-of-way, which you granted for the car wash facility. And really, the Electric Ave. right-of-way is very wide, so if we held the 20-foot offset, we'd almost be 40 or 45 feet off the edge of the pavement, which is very difficult to see when you're driving up the road. It puts it almost as far back as the building. So that existing wash sign is right, actually, right in the middle, and it's right, one foot inside the property. We're asking for the same for the two additional signs. The first would be the existing sign for Proctor's business that would be located in this location. The second would be on Lot 2 for the new car wash, excuse me, for the new gas station facility, which would be located right in this location there. I think that is a broad overview. We've given you some pictures. I don't know if Lisa mentioned, but in the back of your packet are pictures of the existing facility, which I'm quite certain you're all intimately aware of.
That's the one on?
Lemister Shirley Road, yeah.
By an edrave.
Right. So, you know, that's what you can expect for a look and feel from a landscaping, massing, scale. It's very similar distance off the road. It's going to have a very similar look and feel. The signage is going to be proposed, it's very similar. Also, very similar location relative to the road. So we provided you with those pictures. Relative to the sewer and other related permit type things that we need to do, we certainly are aware, this is our first step, we were before you first. We realize we can't go very far unless we have special permits and the relief we're seeking from your board. But the next steps would indeed be sewer commission approval. We are not proposing sewer, as was mentioned, in an easement, so we've actually master-planned things based on that regulation. And we are aware of the wetlands. We will need another notice of intent for this work and site plan review with the planning board. So those would be forthcoming after we receive your decision. I think that's it. I'm happy to take any questions.
Just for clarification, so originally, this was 380, 390, and 400?
Yep.
And then, right now, as it's, it is one lot?
Correct.
Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. And after here, you will go to the planning board and go back to lots?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, we would do, probably after the planning board process or at the end of the planning board process, we would file an A&R plan to subdivide the lots.
Okay.
Meant to mention that.
Thank you. With that, I will open it up to questions from the board.
Mr. Chairman, my first confusion was in the letter from the Sewer Commission. From a letter to the Sewer Commission, it sounded to us that they had some special findings to have before anything could happen. So I kind of wondered if we're jumping a gun here, that we should be having the Sewer Commission first define whether they will allow or what, whether they, that they meet the conditions for the sewer first.
What we, I don't disagree, other than what we can do is just simply condition it in there, that they have to get the, you know, like a condition in for our special permit, they have to go to the Sewer Commission and get that approval. We'll also condition, you know, of course, they have to go to Conservation, we'll also condition, you know, that it has to be divided into lots. Whatever you want to condition in there, we can do. And then this doesn't take effect until those, and of course, part of what we say is that we have to satisfy all other boards in what I will read in the final, depending on whatever happens. But they can, we can hear this and condition that.
And that's acceptable to the applicant. It really doesn't matter because we, they're independent approvals, and we need them all. We can't build if we just get three or four. So we, you know, we need your approval, we need the Sewer Commission's, we need all of them. So we're happy to accept that as a condition.
Could you, Mr. Mr. if may, could you just discuss? So one of the things that I looked at when I saw the application is the variance that you're asking for in the driveways. It's not the first time that's come up since the planning board has changed that bylaw. And, you know, as you know, the variance is a high barrier to prove, and it's, you know, it's based on topography, shape, soil conditions. it's based on topography, shape, soil conditions, and the shape cannot be self-inflicted, which it looks like it is here. Could you address that? Is there any way around that?
Well, only to say that we have, you know, you could, I think you could reconfigure. It just wouldn't be as beneficial from a lot of flow standpoint, traffic flow standpoint. You have driveways that are closer together on that for the convenience store use. So, you know, it just seemed to make common sense to us, quite honestly, you know, to do that. And, you know, given that we could, you could, you know, you have another option, it's just not as desirable, and we're not proposing any, we're not proposing any more than would otherwise be on the whole lot, you know, the parent parcel, there's still a total of four. So, I understand we're creating, it may be considered that we're creating a hardship, but you have to understand that a year ago, we had actually three parcels out there that we consolidated, you know, to take care of some other ancillary issues. So, we're in a case here where, I would say because of the lot shape that we're asking for this, because we had sort of a funny shaped lot up, and then I'll go back over to the board.
While you're doing that, if you didn't have this combined driveway, then the driveway servicing the business in the back would basically, you'd have to take turns to get up and down the driveway. Two trucks wouldn't be able to pass each other on that one little strip.
If we didn't have, say that again, I'm not sure.
If you didn't split it, so now you want to get 40 feet wide, obviously for car and a truck.
Yeah.
And the trucks, you want one to be able to come up while one's coming down.
Yeah.
If we make it a divided, so you only have a driveway going to the business in the back, it's not going to be wide enough for two trucks to pass each other. You'd have to take turns going up and down that road. So, that would really be an impediment to the business in the back is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I mean, that's a way to look at it, for sure. I mean, I understand your point, I really do. I just, before, we came before the car, any other thing about the car wash is, your bylaw requires us to have an ingress and an egress for the car wash. We have to have two for the car wash business. So, it's not necessarily something that we wanted to, we could have consolidated these, but your bylaw says we have to have that. So, we're kind of caught a little bit between a regulation and a regulation here, you know. But be that as it may, we actually had three lots before we came before you with the car wash. So, you know, by letter of the law, we would have been obligated, we would have been entitled to six curb cuts. And in fact, we really have a curb, you know, almost one continuous curb cut along the whole thing. So, it's sort of, we see this as a significant improvement to the way the traffic circulates onto and exiting the site. So, I understand that we are requesting three here, but it really is just due to the, you know, the way the site is configured. There's not another good spot to put a use like this, you know, this use wants to be in the front of the site. Putting two entrances here just didn't seem to make a lot of logistical sense to us. So, I don't know if that really, I don't know if that's a satisfactory answer, Mr. Wunter, but that's kind of our thought process.
So, I guess the one question I have is, you know, the hurdles that you have, I mean, it's statutory, you know, I mean, the obligations of the board are, you know, to interpret the bylaws and, you know, I know the variance is a much harder hurdle than a special permit. So, are you saying that the driveway as proposed is a, could be a safety issue, and that it's from a vehicular standpoint, it's a lot easier the way you have it from a safety issue?
We believe that the way we've laid this out is the best from a safety standpoint to accommodate the uses that are there, that are proposed and that are existing. I mean, this use is existing, we're just relocating it. And, you know, there is a use here now, it's not the same use, but it's another, a third use, it's a retail store use. So, and that has an unconsolidated curb cut that we're proposing to consolidate. So, at the end of the day, you're going to end up with four curb cuts on this one parcel of land. I know we're subdividing it, and we're going to have three on one, but at the end of the day, you're going to have, you know, the net result would be the same if we could find a way to reconfigure this and put it on Lot 2. You see what I'm saying?
And I can't remember, if you just tell me how, so unconsolidated, are you saying that there's no, there's no?
Yeah.
There's no?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, there's a few.
It flows from the road to the?
Yeah, I mean, we added some.
It's the Wild West in front of the store.
Yeah.
Pulling anywhere.
That's what I thought.
I mean, you park, you can park right along, you know, as you pull off the road. I mean, there's a few, there's a few islands there. And we actually did a little bit of work in that spirit with the car wash project, as I'm sure you're aware, we put the islands in there. And this would be a continuation of that. We'd be looking, it'd be the similar type look and feel with the nicely landscaped, you know, you'd get something that looks more like what the car wash looks like and what the existing facility looks like off of Leamster Shirley Road. So, I understand your comment, but.
Yeah, just one other quick question on the proposed Proctor sign, landscape sign, how big is that going to be? Is that the existing sign that you have there and you're just moving it closer to the road?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's not going to be, it's not going to be a gas station sign?
No, well, not that one, no. But that's a relocate, so that's a, we were careful to choose our language. That one is a proposed relocated Proctor landscaping sign.
Right.
This one is the new proposed gas station sign. So, I think it's pretty close to the right-of-way now. And I actually gave you a picture of that.
I saw that.
Looking from this direction, I think it might be a few feet further back than what you permitted for the, what we're actually.
You want to bring all the signs aligned with one another?
Yep, right on the same.
But do not, so the existing Proctor sign is not going to look anything like the pylon sign that you're asking for?
I think, I don't know, are you proposing to change it up or just move it?
We might change it up, but it won't be a pylon like the gas station sign.
Similar scale to, probably similar scale to what the car wash would be here.
Okay.
And I guess the other thing I'll add to the whole discussion about the curb cuts and traffic circulation relative to lot lines is, we have the added wrinkle of a sewer regulation on top of this, as we've read. We have to keep the sewer connections for the buildings on the lot that they're served. We can't put them in an easement. So, I can't take this property line and move it over here, because we have the sewer that comes down through here that, you know, and this building has a stub that comes off of Dana Street. So, we're sort of locked in with that, you know, with this property line configuration. So, we have, I understand that we're proposing these property lines. Well, at the end of the day, there were three properties here, and at the end of the day, there'll be two. So, we're in a little bit of a gray area there, I think.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, you actually still end up with four entrances?
Correct.
On Route 13?
Correct.
From the two properties?
Correct.
From the two lots?
Which would be allowed if, provided they were on the same, provided you had two on.
Yeah, I understand, you're just moving one on to the?
Correct.
The Lot 1, the 40-foot.
Correct.
Okay, and then you have an entrance into the gas station from that 40.
Yeah, right here.
And that's the part of the reason you need the 40 feet.
Yeah, we're going to have, we're going to have regular vehicles, pedestrian cars and trucks.
Right.
And then we're going to have trucks, you know, trucks and trailers coming in and out of here. So, we thought that we wanted to oversize that. It's a sort of a voluntary upsize for safety reasons.
Right, and I agree, for safety reasons, it does make a lot more sense than, and like you say, right now, there actually are no, it is wide open where the supply, the landscaping and supply is right now. The only barriers are what you have put out there.
Yeah, I mean, you want to have some granite out there, and I, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And you already have the special permit for the landscaping part of that. You're just proposing the actual building moving back?
Correct.
To the back lot.
Yeah, there is a special permit, and I guess I want to clarify, we did not ask you for outdoor storage. That made it in Gary's letter, but unless I missed it in my application, I don't think we asked you for that. And I don't think we.
Yeah, I mean, you do have, at least currently in the store, you've got storage out front. You've got those bins with the material in them.
Let's take a look.
If, so.
That's Gary's letter, though.
Yeah, it's our contention that we have that right already. So, we didn't ask you for it again.
Right.
Because the special permit that would exist on this property, I think, would run with the land. So, we're, we're just, that's just a relocation, the outdoor storage. It's not a new use.
So, it's really a modification to the current, that's how you see it?
Right, it's a, right, the location, the use is not changing, it's just a location change.
Right, okay. One more question, you're moving the, you know, just to stay on that Lot 1 for right now?
Sure.
You're moving the bins to the back part of the property?
Yes, sir.
What is the distance to the, I know in the back part is residential?
Yes.
What's the distance and?
Yep.
What are you going to have for screening?
Well, there's actually screening there.
Pop zone.
Yeah, so the building would be set back at least 20 feet, that's your bylaw. So, we've actually proposed that at 20 or 21 feet to preserve enough, to preserve area in the front. There actually is a screen there, I mean, Dan, you could talk a little bit about this, but there actually is a fence there and trees, if I remember correctly. I don't show very well in my plan. But along there, there is screening that exists there today.
Oh, yeah, I actually have been down there, I've seen.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if there's any intent to any more, or that's going to be the screen.
Well, we could, you know, we can look at it, but there is indeed some there today. And then the parking would be set back per the bylaw, which is 15 feet. So, we proposed that. So, there definitely will be a buffer strip in there. I think the trees and the fence are right along the line, so there'll be some green space between that and the proposed building and the parking.
Okay, and the abrevities that I saw there, large abrevities, those are on the Proctor property?
Right.
We'll put there for screening.
Correct.
Dan Proctor, 1529 Mass Ave. Yes, so, all the way back to 2003, when I had the planning board review for that back parcel. Six-foot-high chain-link fence with privacy slots on the residential side of that fence. Abrevities planted every five feet along this whole line here, all the way down here. And then, excuse me, from the car wash, we also had a concern from one of the residents out here, because this is actually a street, and the glare from the car wash, so there has been abrevities planted right here, just recently, to close that off also.
You've already done that, or you're going to?
Yes, no, that was done.
Okay, good, okay. All right. Any other questions from the board?
I do, Mr. Chairman. So, we just want to make sure, the red building's the one that's getting pushed back to the car?
That's correct. The red building would be located here, that's my office building.
You're knocking down the existing store that's going away, because that's the gas station?
That's correct, so the whole 400 electric ave would be torn down. The only possibility, I'm actually looking into the feasibility of moving the garage part of that building, and that's that proposed 2,604 square foot garage. If that can be moved, that would be moved. If not, that would be a brand-new Morton building.
Okay. I was there today, and I didn't notice any school buses, do they no longer park there?
The school buses are gone.
Okay.
Yeah, forever.
Good. What are the proposed hours of operations of the store slash gas station?
Mickey?
Whatever's allowed by their zoning bylaw.
Whatever's allowed by the zoning bylaw, so 5 to 11?
What are they bylaw on?
Off the top of my head, I don't know what that is, but also, okay.
I'm not sure, your bylaw might be silent on that. You know, I think we'd be proposing something similar to what we have down on the, in a lot of ways, this is a very similar proposal to what was, what we have down the street.
Is that one 24 hours a day, 7 days a week?
I believe it is. I think I filled up my tank there late at night.
Right. But I mean, is that what you're asking for, 24-hour-a-day operation?
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to run a similar operation to what we have down the street, yes.
I'm just worried about the neighbors. Down there, you don't have neighbors. Here, you have neighbors. That's my big concern. The drive-through, me personally, I'd like to see some sort of sound screening device that separates the drive-through to the area where the neighbors are, sound carries at night, the rest of the yard's quiet, and people are in there saying, give me a large, regular, or what have you, and.
Okay.
My own personal. What about lighting for the site? How are you going to keep the light on the site and the site itself, not bother the neighbors?
Yep. So, we would have, we haven't gotten into lighting yet, but we certainly can, if that's the wishes of the board. But we would have lighting that would be directed towards the property and be down, you know, nowadays, we're very concerned with that on all sites. So, we would have lights that are directed down and forward. So, we'd have parking lot lights surrounding the facility. So, if we had lights in the back, they would be facing this direction. I would, there would be some modest lights on the building. But again, we're talking, we'd be talking about fully shielded, fully cut-off light fixtures that have, where you don't see the, directly looking at the bulb from a glare standpoint. And, you know, and I guess I can't speak for Dan's, Dan, do you light, are you proposing lighting back in your area, or?
Basically just security lighting and lighting on the buildings.
Lighting on the, but how about back in this side?
Car doors.
No, yeah. So, we, you know, this would be lit up like you would typically think a car wash would be. But we'd have quite a, you know, quite a distance back to the residential properties here. This would not be lit, but we would have some security lighting on the building, a minimal level of security lighting. And, you know, if this is something that your board needs to see, we can certainly get into that. We anticipate this being a big issue when we go to planning board. So, we certainly would be, that would be something we would typically do a photometric plan for when we get into the planning board portion, but we can certainly, if it's the wish of the board, we could certainly accelerate that.
Yeah, that's one of our things, glare observable from the lot line. If the store and gas station itself is going to run 24 hours, is the coffee shop also going to run 24 hours a day?
I guess we have to come up with a.
That, to my mind, that's going to create the noise of the squawk box and, you know, so that would be different for me, personally.
Okay. That does not run 24 hours, because I know that, you know, I've been in there and it's not open down there. So, I think that the donut shop closes. I guess we just don't have that for you this evening, but I understand your point.
Let me just, I wasn't really going to get into that lot till the other, we're in it now, so we'll stay in it. And that donut shop, when they have the donut shop in there, do they, is that like a separate entity? Do they just lease space and run their own operation, or is this under the, you know, the gas station is just?
I don't think we've determined that yet. It could be either way. It could be a, it could be integral to the convenience store operation, or it could be leased. We haven't determined whether, which way that would go yet. Either way, the operation would be the same. You know, you'd have a counter inside and a drive-through on the outside, it's just, I'm not sure, that's up in the air.
Yeah, and I will agree, the one, you know, on down Shirley Road is, you know, the donut shop closes early.
Yeah, I don't go down that, that time of night, so I don't know.
So, and the gas station and store part stays open?
Stays open, right.
For 24 hours.
So, is it, if, I'm sorry, I don't get it, so, this is something that the applicant's just going to be the landlord and somebody else is going to run the day-to-day business? Is that what's going on here?
I'm getting a little out of my realm here, but you want to talk about that, or? Does anybody want to?
I mean, I'm trying not to, you know, pry anything out of you, but it seems like.
No, no, I just, I do good at drawing plans, but.
Okay.
I'm going to get into operations.
To answer your question, no, I would not be running the gas station, convenience store, what have you. So, I'm just applying for the special permit, so I can get a special permit on that piece of land, so that then I can move forward with that special permit.
Now, they're just kind of like, say, if something doesn't go according to the oil the way it's supposed to be, then we have to come to you, and you've got to go to them, instead of us, just, you're in charge, and you could make the changes, you would have to?
So, the land would be sold. So, if something goes wrong, if something goes wrong down the road, you know, a year from now or two years from now, I would not own that property.
Okay, you're developing it, you're going to turn it around to somebody else and that sort of thing?
Yep.
Okay. I have one more question, but now it escapes me. I guess that's it there, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, so, first question, first question is, is that I know that it's supposed to be doing some improvements on electric ave, and how is this, you know, I don't, this looks to me like it's, what electric ave looks like today, is this, is that, is anything affected by the improved, you know, with the electric ave improvements?
I'm not aware of anything going on in electric ave, other than just maintenance of, you know, drainage and what have you. All the work on Chase Road, you know, the northern side of electric ave, but I'm not aware of any work happening on electric ave.
Okay, all right, I just, you know.
But this wouldn't preclude. But this wouldn't preclude any, you know, even if, I don't know of any either, but a significant widening could happen here and not, because there's so much right-of-way. There's almost 20 feet between the edge of the pavement and the right-of-way line, so there's a lot of space in there. So it wouldn't be anything, these plans would not preclude any work from being done in the future, just because there's a large right-of-way.
And then, next question was, snow storage. You haven't put anything on here regarding snow storage? Where is your proposed, two areas for snow storage?
Yeah, we'd have, we actually have a lot of area, I mean, all in these green spaces, in around the edges here. Currently, our snow storage is in here for the, for the car wash, and in the back, and in the front. We can't put it near the wetlands, I wanna be careful to say that. In the back here, Dan, I mean, you plow it, if you could, but I think we'd have, we'd have area for snow storage off the edges. So there's quite a bit of green space, actually. Your buffered, your parking lot buffer zones are effective places to put snow. We have a lot of extra space here, this is sort of, you know, for truck maneuvering and things, so there's actually, there would be extra space that could be utilized in a rare, above-average snowfall year to place snow as well. So, we haven't identified that on the plan, we cert, again, we would certainly have to do that when we pull the full site, site plan packets together for the planning board.
Okay. What's the total square footage of parking that you're proposing?
All the gray areas, you mean?
No, basically, you know, you designated parking spaces here.
Yeah.
I'm asking you what the square footage is on the parking.
I don't have the number off the top of my head. Let's see. I'd have to get, I don't have that number handy. I mean, so just to identify them again, there's parking in front of the building here, it's 19 by, the spaces are 19 by 9, and there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11 in the front. Same thing here, we have diagonal spaces and a couple of perpendicular spaces, same thing, 19 by 9. There's 20 here, excuse me, 12 here, and then, 1, 2, 3, 8 over here, same, same thing, 4 up here. I don't have the square footages tallied up, but I could get it to you.
It's part of the bylaws, where you have to have three times, three square feet of parking for every square foot.
Right.
And so I'm just asking if it's, you know, trying to confirm that you meet that or exceed it?
Yeah.
Because there's a, to me, there's a lot of difficult parking here to maneuver.
Yeah.
When you have a drive-thru going, when you have other things going, this is a very congested plant, right now. You know, I worry about that if folks are in the drive-thru, you're proposing only 24 feet, and for somebody sitting in the drive-thru, and then somebody trying to back up, that's not really a lot of room for all those parking spots to the right of the building on that area. And so I'm just questioning, I'm just asking you about what you have, and...
Yeah.
And how that, how does that meet the bylaw? Is that another variance of the bylaw?
No.
That you're asking to?
We're not asking for that. We intend to meet or exceed the bylaw requirements for that. I don't have the exact number, but I can tell you, we've laid it out to be in compliance with or exceed the bylaw. We're not asking for that waiver.
Okay. The other thing is, we're having a lot of discussion here, and it's a difficult part for the board that you've asked us, is on the idea of putting a third driveway on a lot. And actually, there's two things there. It's the third driveway in the lot, and also a shared driveway for commercial purposes. So we haven't even gotten into that that much, that, you know, that's really not what's supposed to be done, is a shared driveway for commercial purposes. It's mostly supposed to be for residential or areas like that. So the question is, as you mentioned, that the reason why the property line is where it is, is because of the sewer. Is there any way of moving the property line? I see a lot of area where that whole 40 feet of proposed driveway is in the property line, and then sharing the driveway, letting the business share the driveway with the existing car wash?
That would be difficult, because this is an exit-only, per that special permit, so this is entrance-only and exit-only. So that would be difficult to share those with the, with the business. But are you saying to shift this property line up, or is that what you had?
Basically, I'm looking at, that doesn't, doesn't that be one of the things that, it kind of takes away that you look for a relief on the parking, on the setbacks on the parking, so that would relieve part of that. You're looking for a relief on the driveways, and that would kind of take care of a lot of that as well. You know, the idea of having a driveway, two driveways in the front, right to the lot, definitely does not look like the best way to do this, I agree with you. Having a driveway on either side of the pumps would be ridiculous when it comes to traffic and this all, and the size and scope of the job that you're expecting. So I guess that's my question, is there a way of shifting those driveways a bit around so that you can accommodate us?
I guess the short answer is no, because in my mind, this car wash, you know, was designed, it's worked very well. We've had great traffic flow, we've had a lot of positive feedback on it. People like the fact that it's clean, it's open, it's just a nice flow of traffic for car washes. You go to a lot of car washes, they're extremely tight, you're making your turns around, okay, this flows, right? If we were to share one of these driveways, then we'd have trucks pulling in, where people are at a car wash trying to wash their cars, because they enjoy a nice, clean car. So the last thing I wanna do is screw up anything to do with that car wash, okay? This, basically, if you look in your head, this is exactly like Pioneer Drive down on Lemmister Shirley Road. That's exactly what we're creating, okay? To a certain extent, theoretically, we could make this a town road if we wanted to be in fully compliant with the town roads. We could actually make this a town road, and then I could have frontage off of it for the back of the property, and we could have frontage off of it here for the potential gas station and convenience store. But again, we didn't feel that was the best route to go, because we felt that the traffic would flow very well here. If you go down to that gas station anytime during the day, is a lot of business. Knock on wood, I've never seen an accident down there. You go to Cumberland Farms in North Lemmister, that place is rocking busy every day. I've not seen a fender bender down there. Traffic works, okay? I understand everything is congested, it always looks congested on a plan, but people find a way to make it work. And we really feel this is the best way to make it work.
Okay. One last question, I remember my last question, the forgotten question. Well, we gave you the special permit for the car wash, it was to be attended during the day by someone on your site, and then remotely, so now you're moving the office around, who's gonna be the one attending the car wash?
Yep, basically, the same guy that works for him, his name is Scott Cummings, he's my mechanic.
Okay.
He's the 5:00 in the morning guy. That's basically his garage, where he does all small engine repairs. So he's that same guy, who just, again, rather than being over here, we're putting it over there. Honestly, part of the reason why the office over there gives us a better vantage point, we do see customers having problems every once in a while, the teller might work, vacuum cleaner gets stuck with debris, whatever. The bottom line is, he is that same guy, he works right there.
All right, thank you.
So with the one entryway on the lower portion, yes, that's gonna be the main entrance and egress for the gas pumps, right? And the other one would be an alternative? Is that what you're planning on, or?
Well, again, not necessarily. I mean, the intent, I would imagine, of the gas station is people are coming south on Route 13, they wanna get a coffee in the morning, they're gonna pull in here, go through the drive-thru, and then they're gonna exit to the south. So to a certain extent, a lot of this traffic right here will really be incoming, probably will be exiting over there, I would imagine. If people are coming north on Route 13, and they wanna go to Dunkin' Donuts, they will be coming in this way to go to it, I would imagine. You know, again, I understand the concerns of the multiple driveways and the proximity of them, but, you know, certain days of the week, certain businesses are busier, okay? If it rains, nobody comes into a car wash. People still buy coffee and gas on a rainy day, okay? My store is not open on Sunday. Sundays are one of our biggest days at the car wash, okay? Just because obviously people are not working. So there will be no traffic here on Sunday, this place might be busier. So there kind of is a little bit of a give-or-take type of thing, as far as general traffic and, you know, busy days and that type of thing.
So will you have to have, if you're, where you're selling off the two properties, will you have to have a special easement to go in to access the driveway into the property? Is that the intent?
That's correct. So basically, this would be the only parcel that would be sold? They would have an easement to go through that property to get to that one, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions? One last question, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know, I mean, this may not be to the applicant, but, so if we don't, I think we can condition the hours of operation, right? I mean, if we don't do 24/7, does that change your pro forma on the, on the gas station? If we say it's only, you know, this hour, that hour versus 24 hours?
Yeah, would you be the first 24/7 in Lounaburg with this station? I don't think there is anybody else.
Sure.
Oh, they are, okay, so you, all right, sorry, I guess I did it, so, all right.
But would that change the, you know, the financial aspects of it, we said it was gonna be 24/7? And the only reason I say it's, 'cause I think part of the board members have said it before, this is much more residential than what is down on the industrial section over there.
Yep.
And I know we, when that came before this board, you know, a similar like structure, we tried to make sure that the, you know, we always try to, you know, I think weigh the applicant versus the butters. And so that's one of the concerns. And I know that that lighting and all that stuff is the planning board's purview, but the hours of operation, I think, is this purview. So that's just one question I had.
Right, and again, it could be a deal breaker, honestly, not having the 24 hours. Again, just, you know, other than the residence over here, you know, these houses here have screening. I'm sure the planning board's gonna require additional screening at this property line for this gas station. This house is 320 feet away from that teller, okay? If you've ever stood out here, the Route 13 traffic noise is way louder than anything you're gonna hear from a lady saying, "Large black coffee and a glazed donut." So just, you know, that's just my opinion, but it could be a deal breaker, yes, the 24 hours.
Did you ask for, I didn't, I don't know if I saw it, did you ask for 24, 24/7 in the application?
I didn't see it.
No, I was...
I don't, I don't think they addressed it.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, we didn't address hours of operation at all, so...
I guess, basically, to go along with what we have right here, is this, I'm kind of looking, I have trouble here, because I'm looking at, I'm granting a permit for the gas station.
That's, that's why I wanted to, when I said earlier, I really wanna keep them separate, I wanna do the lot one, you know, let's look at that, and we can even make a motion on that, and then we can go to the car wash and talk about that, if you wanna do it that way. We also can do them together, if that's what the board's wishes are. Whichever's gonna be easier for the board. And the applicant, do you have any preferences?
Yeah, first of all, a couple of things. As far as the donut shop, drive-thru, certainly that could be closed at, you know, 5:00 in the morning till 11:00 at night type of thing, closed after 11:00, so you don't get that sound, you know, to the residential area. To answer your question, it has to kind of be a two-pot scenario. In other words, if one doesn't happen, the other one's probably not gonna happen, is really what it comes down to. So, you know, that's why the application, I understand, there was two different lots and two different questions, but it really is all one package.
Do you want, okay, so you want it done under them, one package?
I wanna, yes, both of them.
You still have to accept two motions, because we really kind of have two different things in front of us.
And two different decisions.
Yeah, it is, it really has to be two decisions.
This, and Mr. Chairman, I believe one of the, there's two questions are quite different. I mean, they do, I understand that they are together, but there's a lot more questions on the, on the proposed use of the, of lot two than there are in the idea of separating it back into, from two, well, back to two lots versus one.
It's different, like you said, it's different, because lot one, you're looking for three different things.
Right.
You've got variant, variants of, dimensional variation, special permit, and a variant. The other lot is really special permits. The drive-up window, all the rest of that, everything on that one really is special permits. So we really...
Yeah.
And the way it's filed, we have to have two decisions, okay?
Yeah, it's two decisions for sure, but the, I think what Dan is trying to say is that, from a practical standpoint, he needs all, he needs all the relief on both of them to make the, you know...
Make it work.
Make each one of them work.
Right.
That's what he's saying. But from a procedural standpoint, I think we do need two decisions.
Correct, we do need two.
But how you determine that is, we don't, if you wanna deliberate on one and then the other, that's fine. If you wanna deliberate on both of them together, that's fine, we just, at the end of the day, there does need to be two decisions, but it doesn't matter to us how you deliberate.
Yeah, that's really the only decision, we'll decide that, and I think we do too.
I could, we could figure that out.
Yeah.
So there is a concern with the placement of the sign interfering with the sight lines from somebody who's trying to pull out of that driveway? So I understand that the sign, you know, the hardship of having the sign, wanting the sign close to the curb, because you can see it. However, the, where the sign is, is kind of in, in the, in somebody pulling out's sight of view.
Then we'll let the engineer address it.
The way you measure sight distances by ASHTO, which is the, an acronym, Traffic Standard Manual, is you take a point that is 14 and 1/2 feet back from the ride line of the street, 3 and 1/2 feet up, which represents where you're sitting in your car driving, and you look both ways to see what your sight line is. So all of, all three of these signs would be set back for later than 1/2 distance, they'd be about 20 feet back to the sign or greater. So there would be no point where you'd measure sight distance where those would impact you because of the geometry of electric ave is almost perfectly straight. So you'd have a, you know, a point here, 14 and 1/2 feet back, which is still within the right-of-way, and you'd be looking this way, and you'd be in front of the sign. So I think we, I don't see that as a concern.
Well, I'm, so I'm trying to understand your plans then. So you're basically looking at it as the cutouts for the driveway are 14 and 1/2 feet back?
That's where you measure the sight distance, from a, when you, when you measure sight distance, you measure it from the ride, from the edge of the pavement...
Right.
14 and 1/2 feet back, and you measure, you measure from that, that's your, that's the point, that's your eyesight point.
Right.
And that you, you see how far you can see in both directions. So that point is, that point would be in front, that point would be in front of the signs, so there'll be no, unless the road curved, which it doesn't, you wouldn't be, you're not gonna be looking through or behind that sign.
All right, so your proposal is, is that when I'm pulling out into the street, I'm already past, and I'm already in that right-of-way of the road?
Right, those, you know, signs won't impact that clear line of sight, right?
Can we legitimately make a decision or anything until we really know about the sewerage?
Yeah, we can condition that.
One of the things, as you know, Jim, I read, it's that you must comply with all other boards and regulations. So, and we will actually put it, the, the, any other questions?
I mean, it's just more concerns than questions, and I, that's just, I don't know if that's properly addressed, so...
Why don't we do this? I was gonna have two things, one after each, but I think that, you know, there's not that many people here now, so what I would like to do is open up the public discussion, and either or, or both, whatever you wanna talk about. If anyone wants to come up and address any question, concern, or anything they have, please come forward to the mic, name and address, and...
Good evening. My name is Richard Trank, and my wife and I own the property at 408, which is immediately to the south, proposed lot two. And there's many issues I'd like to go over. One of them, to start off with, it would be the hours, I believe you guys discussed the hours. The Dunkin' Donuts at the Shirley, Lemmister Shirley Road is open from 4:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The convenience store is open from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Three of the bedrooms on that residence is facing north. So they would be in direct for anything, any lights on the building. Of course, you talked about screening, and I think a six-foot fence around it, the perimeter, would probably help on the car lights, but I don't think about the lights of the building. I mean, I don't know if anybody would want to live right next to that, myself. So that would be one concern. And of course, you've got all the screening. The snow storage, I believe you discussed, and it cannot be located on the storm-drained collections. I, I notice, speaking of the storm drain collection, you have one on the island there, and on the, around the cow wash, you have a six-foot, I mean, a six-inch granite curb, and then it's landscaped. If that storm drain is on one of those, my basement will be flooded every rainstorm. You cannot raise the groundwater six inches and not have major, major impact. There's also supposed to be surface draining, a readout on that, this is 6.4-4 on number seven, and I heard nothing about that. The landscaping, they talk about trees going in, and that would be something that would be required. And move on to the noise. Mass regulation, 310 CMR, 7.10, the noise is allowed from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Certainly a far cry from 5:00 to 10:00, or 4:30 to 11:00. And there's also 6.6, 6.3, 6.2 of the Lunenburg bylaws that talk about the hours between 8:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. But it says at the district boundary line. I'm not sure that that's applicable in this situation, but that would be a consideration. I spoke about the storm drains. Well, my family has owned that property.
The storm drains you're talking about, those are currently there, correct?
The storm collection, right. There's two storm drains from my property, basically up to the Unitil. I have one within my property, but I also have one right just outside on the north corner. And if you were to eliminate one storm drain, you'd cut the collection by 50%, okay? And this area has been notoriously problematic over the years, absolutely. And apparently, there's supposed to be an approval for the stormwater management permit application, and I've heard nothing, I've heard about the sewerage, but nothing about the stormwater.
There's, there's a lot of, like I see, like the engineer said, this is like the first step. For, you know, what is before us are the things that can be before us. A lot of the stuff you're mentioning would actually be before other, like the planning board, the sewer commission. Now, those, those would all be addressed at those meetings, and they have to go to all of those.
I'm sure Jack Rodickwens and the Lunenburg police would like to fill you in on the stormwater problems there. I can't tell you how many times they've had to close down 13 because of the stormwater. I mean, we're, Unitil moved in, and we're playing with a loaded gun here. This thing is, is, it's so critical that that storm drain is maintained and open at all times to move any groundwater.
So you're saying, since Unitil moved there, you are getting more water?
Yeah, since Unitil moved in, that compounded the problem. There's no question about it.
Could you point out where you, where you reside on that plan, if you might please? Yeah, the last big rain event.
Personally, I reside at 44 Otis Street, but we own this property right here.
Okay.
Okay, and like I said, there are three bedrooms out of a four-bedroom house that are right here on the north side, and the, you probably, I can't hardly see it on this, but there's 12 parking spots right here, and each one of them would be facing, the car lights would be facing the house if they parked front end, nose in, which is probably pretty much typical. And I, I'm not sure about the, the, the distance here, the 15, the 20 feet here, if that's legit, but this is the storm drain I was telling you about. If that's on a raised area, there's going to be major problems. This one here is basically more towards my property, so...
Is that one on your property?
It's, well, it's on the stru, it's on the street, on the east end of the street.
It's on the street, so they couldn't, okay.
Yes.
So it's not the neighborhood.
My property line goes right along here, and if you do it, continue the line, it would be probably six, seven feet within my property.
Okay.
If you were to continue this line.
So is there a fence there now for you?
There's no, well, there's a very low fencing.
Right.
Approximately here to here, there's about a, a three-foot picket fence, and from there, there's like an 11-foot chain link with barbed wire on top going back. That was put there back when SkyCycle had the property.
Out, yeah. Okay. Anything else you'd like to?
Yeah, I had a lot.
Feel free, take all the time you want.
Snow storage areas, he went over, and of course, can't put those on the, on the storm drain or anywhere around it, it would interfere. That's what, pretty much my biggest concern. I wouldn't have any problem with him splitting, splitting the property into two, Lot 1 and Lot 2, just that I'm trying to sell that house as a...
I was going to ask you that question because it's a residential house.
Correct.
So, but you have a sign out there for sale commercial.
Correct. It's a residential house used in a commercial...
In a commercial district, yeah, okay.
See, it's a complex problem for me.
Right, right.
If I end up having to sell it for a house, or rent it as a house, who's going to want to live next to that? So I'm kind of in a pickle on that one.
Right. But currently, you've got it for sale as commercial?
Yes, it's for sale as commercial, as well as residential.
Right, right, okay, alright.
Maybe the developer would want to buy it and incorporate it into the plan.
That's always a possibility.
Never know.
Yeah. Layers are open.
And what about, no, I, I mean, I grew up in Weyland. I know that that property, the gas station, the current gas station that's there, not this new one, that was your father's property?
Correct.
And that was probably all one lot at one time?
Correct. The house and the garage were on one lot. Of course, it was like five little lots that my father had purchased to encompass that area.
Right, right.
Then he ended up selling the gas station years ago.
Right.
And my mother lived in that house up until we moved her out, due to her health. And my wife and I currently own it.
Okay.
So it's been in, it's been in the family.
Spending your family for a long time.
Yeah, over my 65 years, that's for sure.
Yeah, I kind of remembered that, I thought that, okay.
So just one last question, sir. Are you saying that now, since Unitil's moved in, that you've had more drainage issues on your property, on this property?
Well, it has, yeah, it has made it worse. Because all of that pavement, any time you put concrete or asphalt down, you're preventing water from going into the grate.
Yeah.
Okay, so you keep adding concrete, you keep adding asphalt, and you're going to have some problems that, you might as well just shut 13 or build a bridge over that old section. Unless, unless something wants to be added in. Now, I don't know if that's a requirement, that the, the board would require the builder or whatever to, to accommodate, add in more drainage.
Yeah, again, that would not be before this board.
Right.
Probably a planning board.
Yeah, it would be before, for other boards, but not this board.
But this has been a major concern.
Yeah, but you know, it's understandable that it would be.
My father even paid for a storm drain to be put within the property on the residential side.
And, are you all done now?
I am.
I will, I will actually ask if the engineer will address some of the questions that you had, such as the drainage.
And I apologize, I had to step out. I had to take a phone call. So I missed some of your comments, and I apologize, sir. No disrespect to you, or the board. The, the drainage, we are obligated by state statute, by the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy, to design the drainage system for the proposed project such that we do not increase off-site runoff. Off-site runoff meaning to abutting properties or to the street right-of-way. So, and that's typically done as part of the planning board process. We'll prepare a big, thick drainage calculation manual, for lack of a better word.
I've seen.
And it will document compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy. The most significant thing from the gentleman's perspective is there, there cannot be any increase in runoff off-site after we're done construction, as compared to the pre-developed site. It has to be the same or less. So we have to, we'll have to prepare that as part of, we're obligated to do that as part of the planning board process.
Okay, and there's other question, it's a legitimate question for this board because we do have to meet certain criteria, and that's why oftentimes we require buffer zones between residential and commercial. And would you address on the gas station, the, what, on that side? I know you're talking about drive-through, it goes right down that side?
Yep.
His house is close to that line? What do you plan to do in that area for buffer, as far as fencing? Anything? What are you doing, what, you know, how high?
We're open to all that. We're open to fencing.
You know, like lighting, I understand. Today, they have a lot of the lighting that is much, it goes down, it doesn't go out. It's much easier to control, but...
Right.
He has a legitimate question.
Yep. I mean, we, we can commit today to buffer this. Fencing, I don't know if we, I don't know the, visualizing the topo there, but maybe we can even do some birmingham or something, I don't know. And screening with, with natural vegetation, a little bit of both. I mean, we can, we can, there are things we can commit to do, doing there to mitigate that concern. The parking is not right up against the 15-foot setback there, it's actually set back an additional five feet. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's 25% further than the regulation. So we actually have, you know, we have a decent amount of land there to do, plenty of land certainly to do the kind of screening that's...
So you have five feet to do screening?
No, 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 we have 20 feet to do screening.
That's that?
20 feet to do screening.
20 feet.
So instead of, you're, you're...
What was I going to say?
We can't put the parking any closer than 15 feet. We're actually more, closer to 20 feet in that, as shown, so...
20 feet, okay.
Right, so we have, even 15 feet is plenty of space to do the screening we're talking about, so...
Okay. Because that is, is something that is just legitimate concern. I would be concerned myself, we can't devalue a property next door, so...
Would you want to? Yeah, and I just wanted to add one thing again. You know, I've had conversations with Mr. Trank, we've always known each other. I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I'm just making a point. Right now, my existing retail store is 36 feet from his house. So right now, trucks are in and out within that 36 feet, you know, what have you. This gas station gets built, that'll be 90 feet from his house, okay? I understand this concern about parking, but again, if anything, we're moving everything away. The property lines here on Electric Ave, I've had conversations with people before, they're all kind of non-perpendicular to the street just because of the way Weyland was developed many years ago. So honestly, all the property lines are kind of nightmarish. His property line and my building are extremely tight based on just the way things were many years ago. So if anything, this whole thing is getting moved away. Honestly, you know, the, I call it the SkyCycle building, the old motorcycle shop, which is for an electric av, is a building that was built in 1970, flat roof. Quite honestly, it is just extremely unattractive building, okay? A new gas station, you know, state-of-the-art everything, new pavement, new landscaping, all that would be better for the neighborhood. I certainly don't have a problem with some type of screening here, you know, as far as what his concerns are with parking, you know, some type of privacy fence, you know, abovites, what have you, landscape berms, that type of thing. But again, I really feel like this is going to benefit his potential for selling his property.
Dan, my understanding is during the last big rain event, the cars were causing waves to go through the front door of your business?
Waves are, is kind of a small term, okay?
Okay.
Right, the bottom line...
So there's a water problem?
The bottom line is there is a 15-inch trunk line that runs the street, dumps out into the swamp here, okay? When that rainstorm happened, I was out there, I was cleaning the basin in front of my store, I was standing this deep in water, okay? Jack Rodickwens and the highway department came. We cleared the basin, you know, blah, 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 we opened up their manhole. This 15-inch trunk line has become silted in more than anybody knew. Jack Rodickwens told me he was going to get a jet pump out there this week, and they're going to jet this thing clean. When that 15-inch trunk line was put in about 15 years ago, we had a lot, a lot of rain, many storms, never had a problem. Bottom line is, again, I'm not pointing the fingers at anybody, but it just was filled in more than people knew, were anticipated, whatever. It slowed down the flow so that when we get these two-inch snow, uh, rainstorms in, you know, an hour, that type of thing, it couldn't handle it. But then, again, we know what the problem is, Jack knows what the problem is, that's going to be solved.
So that's high enough that the water actually flows north?
That's correct. It dumps into the swamp over here, which eventually goes down and crosses all the way on West Street by the S-turns.
Alright, interesting, alright, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct, yep. And Unitil's comes down and dumps on the high side and also goes that way. Yep.
So in the plans, there's a storm drain, it looks like a storm drain that's, let's just say, kind of the center of Lot 2, that storm drain there, what's, what's the proposal there to prevent it from being, you know, higher than this gentleman's, this storm drain below it?
This one here?
Yes.
Yeah. That, that is something we will address in the more, in the more detailed plan package. I mean, that storm drain is now in the middle of pavement, and it would end, you know, as shown, it would be in the middle of the...
The grass.
So we'll probably have to relocate that, I'm guessing, to be more in the gutter line. So I mean, there's, there's going to be modifications to the drainage that we're going to need to do to accommodate this. There's going to be drainage appearances we need to put on the site to make sure that we meet the standards that I mentioned earlier.
And your drainage on the site, is that going, is that staying on the site, or is that to be proposed to go into the street?
There would be definitely an overflow into this trunk line, but again, we can't put any more there than was, than what is going there now. So we have to analyze how much flow is going to this, this line from this area, and we can't put any more there. So we'll have to put drainage, likely subsurface, for the benefit of this and for this, to make sure that we don't cause any downstream or off-site flooding.
And the concern is not as much, I guess, on the, on the landscape area, because that could be left as a pea gravel or more of a, a soil, an area that can absorb moisture.
Right.
However, you're proposing here for the gas station is a concrete, well, asphalt, you know, over 90% of the property.
Yeah, but I think you're going to find that it's going to be a reduction in the amount of impervious area out there.
Okay.
Because this isn't green today. You know what I mean? This isn't green today. You know, we're adding a lot of green space in there, so that's part of the analysis, too. Yeah.
But you're also proposing that that's where I'm going to be putting, uh, uh, snow and other things that will now affect the stormwater drain and things of that sort?
Right, and that's all, that all ties into that whole drainage analysis that I referred to. I mean, that's a big, that is a big deal. We can't pile snow on top for catch basin, and we can't put it on top of, you know, you know, if we had, there's an open drainage basin over here that we designed for the benefit of this, we can't put snow storage in that because it takes up the capacity of the drainage basin. So I mean, there's all those concerns that go into that. That is absolutely correct. We, we know that, and that's part of the detailed design that we do at the next level.
So what you're saying is that there's no more, with all your stormwater management calculations that you need to do, there's no more water going to leave that site and go to the applicant's or the applicant's site?
Right. By regulation, we're, we're required that, that there's sort of separate regulations apart from your board that we're required to meet on that, yep. And, and not just state, there's town regulations as well. You have a storm, your stormwater bylaw speaks to that as well, so we get into that in painstaking detail as part of the planning board process, so... And it's peer-reviewed by a person with my similar credentials, a professional engineer that works for the town, that checks those calculations on behalf of the board as an expert, so it's, you know... Was there anything else?
Anything else?
That I failed to discuss that I missed, that you'd like me to address?
Okay, with that, I will ask if anyone else would like to come up and, from the public and speak? Just come up, name and address, whatever you have to want to say. Nobody, okay? All right, with that, there's any more questions from the board or discussion you'd like to make before I ask for a motion?
I guess my biggest discussion would be is the, is the idea of the hours. I would, I would feel that based on, you know, the idea of it not, not affecting the neighbors, not, some of the regulations that we have to pay, watch out for, that the hours is something that we would have, we, we need to take a look at. My concern would be is that if I limit the hour, if I, if we put a, a limit on the hours, if Mr. Proctor is looking at selling the land and, and to a, somebody who's looking to put a business here, it kind of impedes him on the amount, on the, on what might be able to be, you know, how it could be sold. So my question would be more of, is it fair that we're sitting here and then it might put some regulations on himself without allowing the person, without the person who's actually planning on running that business being in front of us as well? So I guess the trouble is, is that I'm granting a service station for a lot that doesn't plant, that, for future use. It's not the, the owner and the applicant is not, of that gas station is not in front of me today.
Right. Yeah, at this point, you are correct. There is no, say, owner of the gas station at this point, it hasn't been sold.
Right.
So I'm sure that, you know, there's probably an agreement or.
Right.
We wouldn't be sitting here.
But that would be for Lot Two, not for Lot One?
That would be for Lot Two.
Right. And you're gonna take Lot One first?
What I would do is if, yeah, I would ask that we address Lot One.
Okay.
I would ask that we probably would do it, you know, we can do it on, you can, well, we can put the items together or, no, we have to put them different because they're different. So I'll let, you know, we'll go by the permits for dimensional variation, then we'll go by the special permit, then the variance. We can discuss each.
I, I guess my concern would be.
But then all under the umbrella of the.
So, so my concern is more for the applicant, is that if, if what we grant and what the regu, and the, and the limitations we put on, doesn't allow them to do what they wanna do, do, would they now have to wait, you know, so in other words, I'm trying to make it so, say, do they, will they have to wait two years to come back or something to that effect? That's what I'm saying.
No, because the, well, I'll, they see the engineer wants to address it, so I'll let him, but then I'll tell you what I think.
Why don't we condition it the same as the hours down on, you know, Lemmister Shirley Road?
Well, I would have trouble with the, with the cars there.
Well, then there you go.
If you would like to address it.
Sorry to, yeah, I don't interrupt, but I mean, we've already made a concession on the, on the donut shop hours, or a statement on what we're willing to accept there, so you can, you could take that into deliberations. Well, one suggestion, you could, I'm not trying to be presumptuous, I'm just trying to say that you could put a condition in the, in the approval that would require review of the hours of operation in a certain time period. So you could require, you could, you could allow, just for an example, the convenience store and gas station to run for 24 hours with the condition that the applicant come back before the board in a, in a predetermined time period, six months, a year, whatever you decide, to review if that's still, how that's working. Or any other type of, but those, those type of conditions are also at the board's discretion in a special permit process. And it's all.
I would suspect, I mean, I'm not a businessman, but you gotta cover the cost of somebody watching the store. You're gonna make enough money in the dead of night to pay somebody to watch that store, so is it really gonna be open 24/7?
I know, it's just tough. I understand and believe me, I appreciate that you're looking after my best interest. I guess, like I said, you know, the whole drive-through for the coffee shop, I don't think that's a problem, five till 11, just because, you know, that's fine. You know, when we talked about the screenings, that, that, you know, PVC fence for screening certainly isn't a problem. Is it possible to have a condition that we come back one year from now and review the hours of operation, see how it's been going, you know, what have you? Because, again, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I don't know what the abutter list was, but we have one person here speaking about concerns about this gas station. Since this went into the paper a month ago, I can't tell you how many people were excited about a, a drive-through, a, a gas station on that side of the town, you know, that type of thing. You know, you don't realize it, but the Whalem area does not have a gas station, they have not had a gas station for a while, we're going to Lemmister and buying gas on Lemmister. So, again, I, I do think that, you know, as much as I respect everything Mr. Trank said, we have one person who, you know, has concerns in, in the whole town and I think that should speak kind of loudly to the board. Again, the hours of operation, you know, let's face it, we have a police department, they keep an eye on those things, you know, it's just the same thing with my car wash, even though we're not open 24 hours a day. I spoke to Jimmy Marino, I said, Jimmy, tell you guys any hours at the night, drive-through there, I have no problem with that, keep an eye on the place, what have you. So, again, the one on Lemmister Shirley Road, if, if those hours have worked and they haven't had any problems, you know, I, I don't understand why that would be a problem here. I understand that that's not as residential as my area, but again, this is commercial. There are some houses down on Lemmister Shirley Road, when you get the end of Lancaster Ave, there's three or four houses right there on that corner, you know, they are within eye distance of that site. So I, I just think that, you know, those type of things could be a possibility. The 24 hours is kind of an important thing to at least start. And if we feel like in six months, we have to review it, well, we could do six months, but I, I just think, why couldn't we run the place for a year, see what goes on, come back and see, you know, where we're at.
And to be honest, I, the, the 24 hours for the gas is not as much an issue, because you're usually, you're just getting gas and you're leaving. It's more of the convenience, the drive-through, where it's more of a, could become a congregation point and there is the, there are, you know, noise regulations in this town for certain hours.
Right.
And certain hours of operation. So I understand perfectly that it, you know, unfortunately, you know, but there is a residential and that's part of, a lot of what this board does, in fact, we just went through this with the last proposal for a gas station and that was one of the reasons why they didn't get it, was because of two, two houses across the street that was residential.
Right.
So I'm just, you know, that's part of the concerns and I don't want it to affect your, your abilities. If I, if, if the board voted it was only open, you know, hours of, of noise ordinance, it's gonna, it's, that's not gonna work either.
Right.
And that's, that kind of thing. So I'd look at, you know, I realize that it's the second half of this thing, that you look at the, the screenings and things like that, but I would, I would definitely look at it as it would have to be for that area, would like to see something of heavy screening there.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, not just heavy, but something that's gonna be, look good to allow him the ability to sell, but still keeping it so it's within reason for yourself to.
Right. No, and I appreciate that and also, you know, if this gas station convenience store happens, okay, I'm an abutter with two businesses, all right? So the last thing I want is people loitering, you know, up by my businesses after hours. Same thing with my car wash. So I have a concern with that as well. So I certainly don't have a problem reviewing that within, you know, a year's time. I understand the, the gas station that got shot down on Mass Ave years ago, that's also a retail commercial area if I am correct and not a full commercial, not for, well, at the time it was. And I believe there was, you know, a half a dozen houses within, you know, golf club range that, you know, had concerns about that neighborhood. So I do think this is a little bit different, you know, there was a gas station, two businesses down for many, many years, you know, then, you know, it's no longer, so there is kind of a need for a gas station down in that Whalem area. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion before we ask for a motion?
So you're asking for a motion on Lot One, Mr. Chairman?
I would like to motion on Lot One. And I think maybe what we should do is on, on Lot One, I can either, you can either do them, like I say, go down the list, I think there's four things. There's a special permit for the outdoor storage. You have a special permit for dimensional variation on the sign setback, you have the 30-foot to a 40-foot driveway. And, and again, we have the, the three, yeah.
The first one.
Huh?
The first one. Second free-standing sign.
Yeah, the sign setback, the driveway.
The driveway, yeah.
Right.
Me, I'm sorry, I may be a little confused. The requirement of a driveway to be 15 feet from the lot line, oh, okay, I got you. No, skip, skip that. I thought, I'm looking for the street line.
And then, and then there would be the variance, which is the, the two, two.
Right.
For a lot.
Right.
Two commercial.
That's. Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I may, the outdoor storage permit, that's for the store, like when you walk up and there's bundles of wood outside or you got the ice machine, that's outdoor storage. I think you do want that.
Well, the out, yeah, go ahead.
Anything outside the building is called outdoor storage.
That's correct. And basically, the outdoor storage is the small engine repair. So in the morning, we tool out a couple of lawnmowers.
Right, no, okay, this is, okay.
So, but then, we had that special condition that they would be brought in every night.
Yeah.
In other words, there's not a, you know, a gated area or that type of thing. So that's exactly what happens.
Right, some of your stuff is on display outs, for the company.
That's correct. You bring them out during the day, you bring them out. That, that's exactly what that was.
Okay.
Bag of ice melt or something, you know, that type of thing.
Gotcha.
And again, they have the special permit already, we're just looking at.
Right, well, there was some question as to whether they asked for it or not, but I think give it to them anyhow because.
And one of the things is, I would just say, you know, we'll just, this is, I consider this really a modification to the special permit, but we will keep all the same conditions that were on the original and we'll just condition that in, that the original conditions stay.
Right.
For Lot One.
You know, me personally, Mr. Chairman, when I went over this, I, I thought we could just give a special permit for the driveway. I really didn't think it required a variance, but that was my own personal take on it.
Yeah, but the planning board changed that, so.
Yeah, it was a recent.
That's a variance. And it's a tough, I mean, as I mentioned before, and when last time we had that here.
Right.
I mean, that's a tough, you know, it's a tough.
It is a tough.
It's a tough hurdle.
And in this situation, I look at it this way. When I look at that and the way they're doing it, it is a safety factor. It is a better way.
Oh, absolutely.
Access.
And exit.
Right.
To both properties, rather than trying to have four, you know, separating out. So to me, it, it does make sense, 40 feet makes sense in the sense that, you know, now you do, you got an extra 10 feet for the turning in. And I don't believe, from what I've seen, and I don't wanna discourage your business, but I don't think that it's a bit, the landscaping, you only have a minimum amount of trucks that I see. So you, it's just family business, right? So I'm not, you know, it's not like this is a, a Home Depot down there.
Right.
So I, I, I understand the concern on the variance. I do think in this, also, like you said, the, the way the sewer line runs right now makes it also difficult to.
Right, because they can't cross, cross the property lines.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's just my feedback on that.
Do we wanna vote on the special permits and then vote on the variance?
Yeah, I think we can. I think if you would like, we can lump all the, the special permits, the dimensional variation, the special permit together, you can make one motion, then we'll, we'll do one for the variance.
But if you do that, but the variance has to go with, with Lot One requirements anyways, right?
Right.
Yes.
So why wouldn't you just lump them all together?
We could.
They don't all together?
Well, no, because I'm just saying, if you, if, you know, for instance, you know, you could vote on the, on the, on the three special permits, or four special permits, but the variance is still included in the Lot One application.
Yeah. Like you say, the difference though is the variance goes with the land, the special permits.
The only thing I would say for the applicant, applicant is that it's a safety issue and that's the only reason. Otherwise, I'd say, no.
Okay.
Because I don't think they meet the, I don't think they, you meet the, the standards by the statute, because it's a self-imposed shape issue.
You're saying no to what?
I would say, typically, I would say no to the variance. I don't think they meet the, the required, the statutory requirements of a variance, but I think in this instance where it's safety is the issue and it's the only really way to make it work, I'm less opposed to, to, to granting it, not granting it. So I would say, from a safety perspective, I'm okay with it. But that's the only reason.
Okay. So, did you wanna, do you wanna address anything?
Yeah, no, I think you lumped them together. I'd say you lumped the variance.
Do you wanna address anything?
We don't have any issue if you wanna lump them together on Lot One or not, it doesn't matter to us. You may find that you wanna separate the special permit.
I do wanna separate the variance from the special.
Because I think there's different findings that you make for each of those.
Correct. It is a different finding.
And that's acceptable. So there actually, I apologize, there'll have to be three decisions because you'd have two for Lot One and you'd have.
And then we have a decision, yeah, that is correct.
And that's fine. I just wanted to clarify that the applicant's fine with it.
So I will accept a motion if you're ready for these special permits.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special permits for items one, two, three, and four, 256.43, 256.43C2, and so forth.
So all the special permits requested.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
With that, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, I will accept a motion for a variance. For the, the driveway.
Okay, I propose a motion for the variance on the driveway due to, as a benefit for safety concerns in the, in the use, in the use of, of the proposed properties.
I'll second.
Okay. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And with that, Lot One is granted. And I'm gonna read the post decisions at the end of this. Okay. So we will go on to Lot Two. Yeah, let's see, we're gonna do this one. Okay, these, these are all special permit.
Right.
So, is there any discussion on Lot Two? The question that you probably wanna answer is, if you wanna discuss the lighting in the, the, what did you want?
Oh, the lighting.
The lighting.
Right.
Some of these things, I mean, oh, in, in that, in that motion too, on the conditions, all the conditions for the one we just heard, all the conditions in the original permit stay in this.
I mean, I'm willing to, to give them the 24 hours after for a one-year review and then at that time, we can ask the police, the fire, whatever other boards would perhaps interacted with this facility at that time, if, if there is in fact an issue when, a need to revisit those hours.
Okay. All right.
And I, I would look at it as I would wanna put some limitation on the drive-through, on the drive-through and the convenience store and the hours of the drive-through convenience side. I have no problems with the gas station being open 24 hours.
Okay, so you would actually like to condition that the, we review the hours of operation.
That's correct.
Including the drive-through.
That's correct.
Well, I think we wanna limit the drive-through.
Limit the drive-through, but, right. It's hard to limit it because we're not putting hours on it.
On the whole lot, yeah, okay.
On the whole lot, you don't have to, so how do we know?
So, just make a bowl 24, and if it's a problem, yeah.
Yeah, so we just review that.
All right.
That whole thing.
That works for me, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Again?
If I may, uh, we'd like to suggest that you condition the use, the drive-through use with hours, uh, between 5 and 11, and that the convenience store, gas station be 24 hours with the, with the one-year, uh, review condition. You think you can separate those uses, the hours. The convenience store, the, the desk is the same, right? So, the attend-
Right, so if you're going to get gas, you can pick up something and bring it to their counter.
Right, so those two are kinda, and they're, they're not noisy and they're not, you know, but the, we understand the drive-through, and I think you can put the conditions on that use, uh, 5 to 11, and the 24-hour be convenience gas with the one-year review.
With the one, yeah, okay.
I would like to see some kind of, um, condition on the applicant, or the, the abutter from, I mean, I know the applicant is a good, good neighbor, and I think that they can work something out where, you know, the light from the cars pulling in the, the parking behind, it doesn't, doesn't affect the abutters. So, I'd like to see that condition.
Yeah, I, I, I had written down, and I agree with you, um, I condition that there's got to be some sort of a privacy fence-
Solid, yes.
And buffer zone between the, the drive-through and the residential property, and that's gonna be a, one of the conditions that I would add to this.
Well, it, it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's not, that's not, really not residential right there, but if you look at-
Well, it's not, yeah.
Well, it is. But it's the residence next door, I mean, if you had potential.
No, because I was, I was just hoping that we weren't talking, because there's the other side of it too, there's where we see Dana Street and those, I know those abutters aren't here either, but there should be some kind of screening there too for coming through the drive-through, so there should be screening down that whole side.
They're, they're, you're right, there should be, but they actually will be more, um, they're actually more abutting the landscaping business than they are the, the drive-through.
I agree.
But I agree.
Yeah, you know, it is.
As, Mr. Proctor, we, we have no issue with that condition. Matter of fact, I think your bylaw speaks to it, I think your bylaw-
It does speak to it, planning board's gonna address it, but I want it in our-
Absolutely.
Conditions as well.
No problem.
Okay. Any other discussion? With that, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, grant the special permit with conditions, uh, previously discussed for screening, uh, with immediate neighbors and other, uh, light and sound that might project backwards onto other neighbors also.
Plus the hours that we discussed.
And hours to be reviewed.
Do you have, do you have all of that, Lisa?
I have the 24-hour, uh, the 24-hour, um, to review after one year, put a privacy fence between the gas station and the residential abutters.
Add the 5 to 11 on the, the drive-through?
Yeah, 5 to 11 on the drive-through-
Correct.
And the convenience store and gas 24 hours.
Correct, yeah.
Can I make one last comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
It would be wonderful if somebody put emergency power at this station, so if we ever had another ice storm, there would actually be a facility in town that could run and give us coffee and gas, that would be wonderful.
Which one's more important to you?
Probably at that point, the gas, I'll make my own coffee. But that would be nice.
That would be a second motion.
All right.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Um, did we get a- We seconded, we did.
Did not get a second to the motion.
Did not get a second.
I'll, I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Um, I think another condition I'd like to throw on, I think I, you have the privacy, uh, fence and buffering zoning, right?
Privacy fence between gas station and residential abutters.
Mm-hmm.
Um, 24-hour convenience gas to be reviewed after-
After one year.
After one year.
Yeah.
Um, drive-through limited to 5 a.m. to 11 p.m.
Yeah.
That also be reviewed after a year.
And of course, all of this, the, that the sewer commission, um, resolves the issue.
Meet all conditions of sewer commission.
Yeah. And of course, the, the planning board's gotta approve the two lot in the area.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's one thing we didn't discuss at all, and I feel, I don't know if I'm, I'm too late to bring it up, you are, but-
Well, it's, we ever made a-
No, I know you, I know you got bedtime, but that's, no pictures taken. The fact, um, is the, is that this, they showed a picture of the sign that they proposed.
Correct.
However, I'm trying to understand the height of that sign. I do have a concern that a 30-foot sign in that area is, it does not, is not conducive with the area.
The way that's addressed, uh, right now, is they're not asking for anything on the sign, which means that it has to be in compliance right now with the, the regulations.
Well, they're asking for the one foot, the one foot setback.
Yeah, but that's different.
It's not the size.
It's not size, so if it's not the dimensions.
Right.
So, what they're asking for is to have it one foot back.
I understand that, however, if you read in the commercial, but, yeah, so, in the commercial area, you're, it says you're allowed a 30-foot sign, and I would hate to see a 30-foot sign put up in that area. That's, that's all my concern, is it takes away-
Okay, so you are concerned with the, the zoning regulation for signs in that commercial area.
It, it, is, is like, as, as Mr. Proctor's sign is for the car wash and things like that, it's not a 30-foot high sign, I would, I wouldn't wanna see, I think that would take away from some of the charm of electric amp type of thing.
Okay.
And I don't think, I don't know if you'd wanna see a 30-
Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah. This is also in your application package, this is just a different picture. Uh, this light hole, these light holes are 15 feet.
Okay, fine, that, that was easy enough. I just, there was no dimensions in the picture, that's why. So, now, that's all right, I just, that's why I'm asking the question. 15 is, yeah, okay, that's a big difference from 15 to 30. Especially, especially the poor gentleman with the residential now would be looking at, you know.
Could you wanna speak? Um, we are in the middle of a motion, so I gotta limit it, but you can, I will allow it.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to say one quick thing, when we're talking about the conditions and that six-foot privacy fence, can we just make sure that we're talking about the southern side here, like-
That is.